Five inches up to nine. Third time in a row, we've been able to pay the bills. Any questions, comments, ready to leave? I'm voting in a favor. Shorty second, all favor. I'll call it that pretty well, babe. I don't know. It's empty.
Sorry, just as that.
I didn't see any additions or corrections need to be made in this year. I'd say our collective office has a pretty busy month. And our collection now more than ninety-eight percent, about ninety, not close to ninety-nine percent. What's going on? The years are wearing. Good shape on that. We're doing it. Court's office have average kind of a month. Neither court system did anything this month. Went down county court, went down one, one active case left. Were ninety-eight percent completions on, on those, a hundred percent completion on two locations. I don't know if there's anything coming in district court right now or not. We've got one in county court. That should be resolved soon. Mark, you can come out, Mark. This is the time of the year. End of the, on the day before where we have to pull out the CDs cover. Happens every year.
Yeah.
Will I have them transferred to the next one?
Actually, they'll come in the second maybe.
Will I have them transferred? Here.
I just, I, I had several things going, so I couldn't turn them over to this one. But they will be here and the annual report will be here next time.
Tell you what, any comments, anything on the consent bill? Make a motion to approve. Got a motion to approve? Gary, other Gary second, all favor? Out of fruit, road fruit.
Road fruit, still laying material down on the road. Treading, waiting on the rain.
Have you, have you talked to, to Mike about that excavator?
No, I haven't. I need to get that up there.
Uh, that county road two thirty-one?
Sonic. Sonic.
Anyhow, we've got a spring that's coming bubbling up in the road bed. And it was gonna put a, I think, what Jackie said, you need to do is put a cold in there. But to clean that out, tobacco not quite sufficient to do that. So I'm gonna have to, and Mike, I'm gonna have to excavate it to clean that back.
I thought we're meeting when we look at that bubbling up back in the road.
Is that where the wet, but the well's on the other side of it?
Yeah, but it's coming out running well.
I thought it quit running.
Well, it's starting to seep a little bit.
But that well did flow for a while, right? Or not?
For a while, but it's quit there, so maybe, let me see what it does.
Did you taste that water?
Yeah.
What, is it bad salt?
It's keeping, I don't know, it's keeping as far as wide as the road, about two foot long, soaking wet.
Well, it is wet.
But that was. You can watch it bubble up out of the middle of the county road.
Well, a month ago.
Somewhere by that, where were we at?
Month ago, we looked at it, yeah.
Wimby Jones lived with the, on that road.
Right south of Wimby Jones, where he lived on the, just go off that hill. Down in the bog.
So the drill well are just off the road back. That water was, who, somebody told me that it was.
I didn't know that.
Water was flowing.
And thank that water was coming from up from that well then.
But that's what I was thinking. Do you think it's flowing well, not, not just a spring bubbling? Well, it is now, but that, when they first drilled it, I think that well flowed. Fresh water. That's a Christmas miracle, Stonewall County.
I wish I had that over my place.
Who owns it?
I, whose was that? That was a Badger, that was a Badger Foundation on the, on the east side of the road, right?
Yeah.
But they didn't own the west side that county road.
Wasn't that?
Jackie, who did he say owned it? I don't know. Colorado Buck looks after that one. Yeah. Well, he's got a different name.
Didn't all that foundation stuff, it's finally sold, didn't it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, there was.
It sold, that sold.
Yeah, he bought, he bought some of that tied unseen on auction in nineteen eighty-eight. They've never been on. But he was landlocked at the time. But he finally got, finally got a, a new owner between him and the county road. I gave him.
What's over Colorado Buck's real name?
Or something like that?
Well, me and Jackie found out, and I can't remember what they said now. Coach. Mike Mims, I think, is one that told us. And over the phone. And I said, who is this? And he said, well, I think it's somebody with Colorado Buck.
I've always wondered what his real name was.
Yeah.
Why'd he say his name was? Does he still have his TV?
Oh, he's weird on that.
Does he still have his TV show?
Yeah. Get on YouTube and look up Where in the World, Colorado Buck, and watch it on.
That's a stage name.
Yeah.
It is weird.
It is. Anyhow, we got fallen water.
Got anything else road fruit, Jackie?
No, sir, I'm done.
Anybody have any other questions, road fruit?
Good discussion on this. Moving on to item number four, Treasury record report. Come on out to the fourth, investment report. I'm sure any of you have, any answer you need to make. I tell you what, that three point seven five percent sure looks better than that point oh eight or whatever that was for a long time. That three percent, we're running that ten percent on barn pedals there.
Well, that's true, that's true.
Kind of seemed like it was fair.
Yeah, yeah, somebody's making a bank.
Yeah.
Me and Ryan, we farm cotton, so we're, we're doing the high. Sleeping late, watching TV.
Any questions on Treasury record report? Comments? Make a motion to approve it. Motion to approve, will you second? Here's second, all favor? Any opposed? Item number five, Consider Resolution for Engine Defense Grants. We did this every year, and every year we have to have a new resolution by the Michigan Court for, for the grants. What was that, about six thousand dollar, what it was last year, and you?
Yeah.
Six thousand and, and change. But anyhow, it's a, it's a little short resolution. I'll read it if you want to, but it just, where we. Once again, it, it resolved the order that the county judge and the county attorney gave it as the authorized official to apply for, accept, define, modify, cancel, or grant application for the engine defense form of grant code, and all of the necessary documents to accept said grant. And that, what that is, is based on how much we have spent in the last year on engines of defense. And it's usually something between six and seven thousand.
Which covers how much of that engine? Is that fifty percent?
Yeah, usually about.
Yeah. Anyway. One favor on the resolution, and I'll meet the time and be out. I'd like working. Do you want to do it?
Yeah, do it, so we can improve.
So motion to approve, second? Here's second, all favor? Any opposed? Item number six, Consider Resolution Authorizing County Grant to Meals on Wheels Plus Incorporated. And if y'all recall, last year Meals on Wheels came to us, asked us if we could grant them a little bit of grant through the county, then they could, they could leverage that into a considerable grant on, on the federal level. And we've got, I think it's like a hundred and four dollars and fifty cents. And it's in the budget for that grant to go to Meals on Wheels. Uh, the resolution basically says that the county has designated some grant funds for them, and our board requested, uh, the whole relation be allowed to apply for, of, of federal money. And they, I, I think their people, it's twenty-three, twenty-three or twenty-four people in Stonewall County, they get three meals a week. I know they haven't been calling for a while, you know, getting a lot of tears to go pick up the meals and bring them over.
Who they got now? They got anybody now?
I don't, I don't know if anybody else wanted to, we, you know, we had one, but they, they were needing some help. They won't cut back to one, one day a week rather than, than three.
Well, she had to quit.
Yeah.
She had surgery last week.
She's had surgery, she's in the hospital.
I think they, I think someone handling is going to dabble in picking them up and bringing them.
Bringing them home, okay. There was picking them up.
Listen to this program, Eric, if you think you'd be interested in assisting on Meals on Wheels and Wheels and Meals, I sure appreciate you stepping forward. But anyway.
Can they get, you and you give them in contact if somebody wants to walk through and take that over?
We'll, we'll, we'll go through. Anyway, uh, the resolution, the county, uh, Michigan Court, uh, needs to approve resolution authorizing the grant funds program. Most approved, shorty second, all favor? Any opposed? Item number seven, Consider Cemetery Mowing and Courthouse Cleaning Changes. Y'all know the problem we have with keeping the law, the cemetery mowed. They got in pretty bad shape. We started getting complaints about them being, worth of like that was for the bribe about it. So, I talked to Tim. Tim has agreed to take care of the mowing of the cemeteries, continue the mowing and the maintenance around the courthouse and other court facilities. But he needed someone to, to do the cleaning of the courthouse and the community center. I've kind of temporarily, if y'all approve that, we'll, we'll make that a permanent deal. We're gonna need, eventually need another lawnmower, and at least another weed eater.
It's gonna have to have a trailer too.
Yeah, well, we got a trailer that, that the sheriff's department confiscated on some thefts that, that, of course, the sheriff's, uh, department now, do a confiscation for. It needs, it needs new flooring. Uh, we've got a well in all, we, we take care of that, put floor in, Jackie's up, look at all of it. So we've got the trailer, we're just doing a little work, but we're basically gonna get, when we go to getting into the heavy mowing, we're gonna need another mower, another commercial mower, and all the lawn mower. Let Tim do that. If he's taking care of that full time, he'll, he'll get done. And if we have problems with equipment, he's probably the best in county, county.
Or we gonna do about a, something to pull a, a sprayer with?
Uh, well, Jackie got the new sprayer over there, so we've got the sprayer, and he's gonna do a lot of spraying on the curbs and that type of stuff.
But I mean something to move it around with. They gonna, they gonna mount it on one of them.
On one of the mowers, yeah. He put, it'll, it'll mount it on one of the mowers.
He can build a frame, or he even said he'd find something to pull behind that mower, so he can set the spray. Keep the calls down, we can do something like that off, we're just out the sprayer right now. It'll work. Yeah, before they used a John Deere side by side.
Yeah, it, Tim's been a lot of time, uh, after the road department out on your minor maintenance and stuff on the vehicles and personal things, so he's, the guy does a whole lot for the county in different ways. And I think that, I think that's the most reasonable way I can come up with, and the cheapest for our taxpayers, to take care of these county cemeteries. I'm just afraid if we go looking at bidding that thing back out, I don't think we'll be looking at anything less than sixteen, seventy thousand a year. Uh, we discussed that last time. We have one bid for eighty-four thousand, and if you really wanna get right down to it, to keep the cemeteries in shape, especially during rainy season, I'm not sure that thing's far off balance. But what we got, and that's on paper.
Me.
That's all he does is take care of that during that time, and then when the mowing seems old, well, he, he will maintain them. And any repairs, uh, problem we have with the courthouse, and I've got a lady, uh, that's cleaning it now, uh, Hillary's cleaning it, around her, up to twenty hours a week to keep the courthouse and the community center clean. And she's done fantastic job so far. I think that's our cheapest way to get this, get this done.
Is Tim willing to help you with the swimming pool down there? Is Tim gonna be able to help you with the swimming pool?
Yeah, he'll be, he'll be able to step down there, getting it ready. It, it's amazing how much Tim does. I mean, it truly is. His very conscience is about, about the job he does. I see skepsis along your face, Shorty.
It's not, it's not really, are we gonna give him more money, or?
No, actually, I think he's gonna be, we, we, we probably have to come up with a, 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 a new, another mower machine. Uh, uh, what we have now is a, 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 a gravel grader, that, that gravely, uh, one that size, now, I haven't priced it in a while. It probably, you're prob, we're probably looking at about six thousand dollars in additional equipment that we're gonna need.
That's a five foot cut. That'd be a five foot cut.
Probably, yeah.
It'd be big enough, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Whatever, go between them.
Well, if we get, if we get too much bigger than, like you said, getting it down between the, the two. You're gonna need a smaller one to do it in between, so I got that, I got that.
Yeah.
I, I got a quick.
It's got that, that other one, forty-eight inch.
I think that's right.
Yeah. You'll probably get between them.
But then you'll need a wide one to get.
Yeah.
I wonder, Nate, Denise's got any of those left that George had?
Huh? I think his would be forty-eight, wasn't it?
Yeah, but I, I don't know, I'm just worried she sold off his.
Oh, I don't, I don't have any idea, actually, I don't know what she's done.
I'll, I'll, I'll call the court, get with them. Call them by several.
But I, but I think we're gonna need one more, one more machine, and probably one more good weed eater. And then, and when we get into the heavy rain season like we did this year, like we do, seem like every year now during the spring of the year, in late May and June, we've, we've got money in the budget for summer help. Uh, I tell them to probably find somebody to assist him out there during that time, to help with the weed eating, and that sort of thing, and we gotta set a mower with good. What I'd like to do is, this one mower we got, as you well know, these cemeteries are covered in grass birds. And if we get another one, I'd like to keep it here if we can, if it's possible, just to keep the grass birds out of the courthouse lawn. But if it gets into too heavy a time, we'll have to use it, or you put a second person on, you know, for a few weeks during the heavy rain season. The county gonna keep, uh, shredded. I'm sorry? The county gonna shred it.
Yeah.
So we've got that, the mower with that, that small shredder, it, it does a good job out there. See, we had to do that condition, you don't know.
Yeah, we'll keep coming up.
I think, I, I, I think as far as staying up, keeping the cemeteries mowed and in good shape, for people to be satisfied with it, and then looking at the cost of it, I didn't, uh, this just looks like to me about the only way we feel. That's like, Gary, and I thought, this thing gonna keep on, and I can, we'd see in, in a few years, that this damn mower, on these cemeteries, could be running a hundred thousand dollars a year. You agree with that, Gary?
I bet you, yeah. I mean, this thing just keeps spilling.
Yeah.
And that's one of them things, we just got stuck by default, I guess. I think we both, one time back about twenty years ago, and it's never let up since.
Forty years ago, we brought it one time, same way.
Has it been that long?
Yeah, but, and, and, and. You know, they need to be maintained, and as it's, kind of works out, the county's here, we're the only ones that, that capable of doing that.
You'll come up. Down, somebody gets on the rattlesnake out there. Yeah.
Come here, there she is right there. Got a little blazer on me.
Nice to meet you. Where you come from?
I was lost. Anyway, uh. Watch y'all's pleasure on that, I, I, here, here, no, I mean, I, you got a, got a better idea, I'm sure. I, I've racked my brain out, and this, this is just the best I can come up with. And I think, I think it's the best way we can keep the cemeteries up in shape, where people will be satisfied with it. Have you heard, Gary?
Yeah. I think, I, I think you're like another deal, ain't that cutting stone? Let's try it, if it don't work, we'll back up.
Yeah, we can always back up, do something else come this spring if it, if it doesn't work. I mean, that's what we did this year. We tried something, it didn't work, we backed up.
It should work.
Yeah. Is that motion to, to continue in this, in this vein? And like I say, on the cleaning, uh, uh, Hillary didn't know if it'd take that many hours a week, but that's what we allow, as, as part-time position. And she, she's already in the courthouse, it does not work for the county. I couldn't hire somebody that already worked for the county to do this. She works, she's employed by Central Frailer District, so she, we can, we can hire her.
So, really, this only gonna cost us twenty hours a week over?
Over what we're doing now, and maybe the, the price of one more mower.
That, yeah, that's, yeah, for sure. Kevin's. Sure, I mean, that's gonna happen. And be, what'd be best is if you can get those lawnmowers on the off, so you could rotate and kind of, I mean, every three, four years replace one. Anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it, this, this gravely that we have now, that thing was, I, if my memory's sure right, I think that thing was purchased in two thousand nine or ten.
I think that's right. I, I don't, I don't believe that.
Pretty sure that.
I know this, we go through, we go through them other rattlesnake mowers, I used to have a stack of them, they're, they're full barn mower.
Yeah. Well, the, the Ziro turnmowers though, they just last, they're.
Yeah.
Those other ones, the steering always went out first.
Yeah.
They just didn't hold together.
I'll, I'll second that motion, man.
Okay, we got a motion, and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Item number eight, open four. We have a bunch of happy faces today. And this is, we get to do this part, we'll get on with the other open four messages, but let's, let's do that. That was your ticket to here. Lita, you know why you're here today?
Well, not exactly, but I do.
Well, Lita, what, what we got here is, it's like it's a proclamation by the Stonewall County Commissioner's Court. Now, this reading too, it says, whereas a great county is only as great as those persons who reside within and set an example through volunteer programs, through personal achievements, and simply through a lifetime of good citizenship. And whereas Lita Dickerson is such an individual, who through her selfish dedication to family, friends, neighbors, and community, has shown herself to be worthy of the highest praise. And whereas Lita Dickerson is a current resident of Stonewall County, and has lived in Stonewall County for many years. And whereas Lita Dickerson has reached the requirement of age to receive this document. Now that accord, we, the Commissioner's Court of Stonewall County, Texas, the state of Texas, celebrate the birthday of Lita Dickerson by proclaiming the twenty-third day of September, to be Lita Dickerson Day in Stonewall County.
Well, thank y'all very much.
Congratulations.
Thank y'all, I appreciate it. I don't forget y'all, I don't see you very often. Well, thank you, thank y'all, thank y'all very much, I appreciate it.
Hey, girl.
Hey, where you been all this time?
I know.
I see your passion everyone.
I see it, that's all I do, I'm just passionate.
Good to see you. And I know who you are.
Still good, I'm too.
Thank you, thank y'all very much for this, I appreciate it more than you ever.
Well, we appreciate you, Lita.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank y'all.
Where, where did you call them?
Uh, I mean, Heidi, Troy, and maybe even far off with that there.
Wayne, Lita, while on.
But there was seven in front of me. We do appreciate it.
No.
It's six. We, we through?
All right, on it, yeah. We're good, y'all.
We appreciate y'all guys, thank you guys. And you're welcome to stay.
Thank y'all, thank y'all.
And y'all done said. Y'all give Jackie another job, that's all we gotta do. See you never look.
All right, you, you keep lying down, okay?
Yeah, we don't miss each other, we see each other seven days a week.
Same time, same day. Same time, same day.
Same deal, every, every week, every day.
Huh?
Really?
Sixty-three?
Huh?
Sixty-three?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four. Sixty-three, sixty-three was the last graduated class of.
P P C. Which was Danny, was Danny in that class?
So you graduated from up here?
Yeah. Nineteen thirty-four.
Six-fourth.
Class P C, graduated four years.
So you went over there eleven years, then got here.
My clothes are gone, Danny, sixty-three student.
Two years?
All right. Back to the, no, right, open four, Gary?
No.
You have anything you want to add? Um, we got a couple things. We got the application in for the SB twenty-two grant, I got that put in last week, the, the quarter million dollar grant for the sheriff's department. Uh, we're thinking this year, we're probably gonna replace two more vehicles. When we do, we got the, it's, it's coming up on three years old, they're running about thirty-five thousand miles now, thirty-six thousand, something like that. Place them, and then transfer a load, load, load apartment. Place them and then transfer a roof, and, 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 that, that should put us in good shape as far as vehicles. And then, and then we might start looking at having a loft or something.
He, he can have that when he has his tinsel on, you know, and just pull them out there and put themselves.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Also, we got, we got approved for the, for the hundred thousand dollar ramp grant. I've got one bid, uh, out there that, uh, is bid to, to go in and put a, a mulch in over the, over the runway, just to re-laden the asphalt and then repaint. I've got, uh, another company that's looked, that's looked at it. Uh, they suggested that we do it a little differently, and I'm waiting on them to, till they come with a plan, and I'm leaning toward that way to make this more of a two or even possibly a three-year project. This hundred thousand dollar grant will be available, available to us every year. We've got some cracks out there, that's why, we've got to do something about it. In two thousand and fourteen, uh, Gary was here in the end, but I presume he might not be away, we, we got a, a, a fairly large grant, federal grant out there. To, to clean those cracks, dig them completely out, was supposed to help this dugout down where the dirt. Sterilize the ground in those cracks, re-sand them, and then seal them back over. Didn't think we got much of a job out of it because the, the, the crew that was, that was supposed to dug out those cracks didn't go down being, they just crashed the surface.
They used to, they used to say, air freshener blew it out.
But anyway, one of the, one of the guys that was in, that worked for the company that did that was now on his own. Uh, Chris and I had a long meeting the other day about it, and this guy told Chris at the time, they weren't doing that right, didn't think it was, it was done right. But the text on his paper signed off on it. So we got a list of his fellow jobs out there.
That guy was out in San Angelo, wasn't he?
Yeah. Anyway, it wasn't six weeks to wait, Johnson, going back through those cracks.
What have they used to clean those cracks with?
They, they had some, it, it, it looked kinda like a, uh, one of these cement, uh, uh, cutting machines. And they had, had a, just a kind of a dado looking blade. And instead of cutting all the way through down to the dirt, they scratched about that deep, that's all. And I kept thinking, that inspector's gonna, he's gonna turn all that down? He didn't, he approved it. And we just didn't give it a good job, so Chris and I going all that, and I, we went over it, uh, at length in my office last week. And, uh, we're kinda on the same page of what, what think we're gonna need, but this may be at least two-year, probably a three-year program to went, clean them out, and we may have to burn them out.
Will, will, text not let us start a project knowing that we can't finish it?
That, the, the ramp grant will, will allow us to do that. We do so much this year, we'll do some more next year, and if we need to, the third year, come back in. But as long as this year, for preventative maintenance or the upgrade maintenance out there, then that's, that's right. And, and it's, and it's easy, I mean, get the ground, I mean, it's just a matter of going into the system, putting the application in, and then it comes back. Uh, SB twenty-two was fairly easy to do, once T figured out how to get in the system. I worked a half a day and couldn't get in, she worked the rest of the half a day and couldn't get in. And overnight, she, the light bulb come on, she went in there, that, had us, had us through the system in about five minutes. I don't know what we, I mean, we spent here the whole day, the two of us, if one night or another, working on that thing, and it didn't work. And she come in the next morning and said, I've got it figured out, went in there in five minutes, was in the system, took me about another five minutes to get the application put in, so. These young minds, that's all I can say. But anyway, uh, that application is in, but the ramp grants, it, it's fairly easy, and it's there, it will be available to us every year to use that. So, I'm waiting on Chris to get back with me on this thing to kinda get us a game plan on it. But I'm thinking that's the one that we're gonna, that I'm gonna recommend we put. But we'll see what, we'll see what, that's the way we, we do it. Anyway, that, that's in the works. Talked to Lance Wells last week, Thursday, I think it was, and I talked to him Wednesday or Thursday. They had just gotten that, uh, that twenty-twenty maintainer from Chivers into their shop in Lubbock. They were gonna do a complete service on it, check it out, fix anything that need to be fixed. We should have that machine this week sometime. And I told Lance to, to just, uh, deliver it out to, to Old Glory, at not any point I'm bringing it here and then us having to move it again, so. We must deliver it to Old Glory, that's where we're gonna have that machine operating. Did you figure out how to drop him a pin?
I don't know how to do that.
Do you know how to do that?
No, my kids can, uh.
T doesn't know how to do it, I guarantee. Anyhow, we need to figure out how to drop Lance Wells a pin on where the yard is over there, so he can give it to the truck driver, so the truck driver will know where to deliver the machine. I don't know how to do that either.
I have no clue.
I'll drop you a pin.
Yeah, if we have to, we can't get it.
Drop away.
But anyhow.
How they're getting Old Glory?
Doug is, is really looking forward to getting that machine, and that he is.
Well, as much as he does, he needs it, he, he is, he's never set still compared to. He's done a lot of hard work down there.
Well, what Doug will be is just gonna speed up their, their maintenance out there on, he's had the county. Instead of him going over and turning around and coming back, and then going back, and then you've got two machines operating.
And it's gonna put a, it's gonna put a new, a newer machine in each precinct now. Which we got two over here on that.
Who, who's, who, who run the John Deere now?
Steve Simmons.
Out here.
Yeah. That's a, that's a good machine.
So anyway, we should have that machine in sometime this week.
No. Staring weird.
So anyway, I guess you have to get your signature ready.
I gotta find the money first.
Like I said, this time of the year, we're having to move out, out of the CD instead of putting it in the system.
Yeah, sometimes I can't.
Well, we was, we was.
Conversation with the bank going, what that CD been covering you for next month?
It's, it's pretty good backhoe for the hires.
Yeah.
And I've had to spend some money on that, but it's still a good backhoe. But a old seven model, it's, it's, it gets made on it. But it's, we're, we're keep, I mean, it's, it's good machine, it's.
Will you buy that machine, do, do?
I don't think so.
Which one?
That, what, what, which one is here?
What, what's the backhoe?
All that backhoe? Uh, it would be the one I can mend, I've been there fifteen years, so I don't know when.
And, and little things like cylinders, you know, and that, that's gonna.
That just goes.
That's gonna happen.
Well, the, the loaders are in pretty good shape.
The loaders, they are, which Doug's got that old nine thirty down there at Old Glory. But it's, 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 the big loader's in good shape. We done a lot of work there last year.
What's a big one, a nine fifty?
No, it's a nine thirty G. Just long as we don't use it. Stay away from using it like a bulldozer, we're all right.
Yeah. Anybody have any?
Yeah, you're exactly right.
Have you heard anything on the solar?
Do a lot of damage.
Uh, on the solar, oh, uh, yeah, that, I, I didn't, I forgot thinking of that. The solar panel folks, solar farm folks will be here to meet with us next meeting, the twenty-seventh.
Yes.
Cool. Uh, the, they're, they're ready to start, and they, they, I'm sure they probably are, they can do it something, but anyhow. They will be here to meet with us, I'll have, I'll have them on the agenda for the next meeting on the twenty-seventh. Uh, I had an email this morning, I think she sent it yesterday, but I got it just more than I wanted in there. And they asked, after the meet with Commissioners Court, after the meeting, they sit in there with me and, and go in more detail exactly how the construction's gonna come about. And I told them, sure, I'll be happy to be with them. But anyhow, they'll be here to meet with Commissioners Court on the next meeting. Anyhow, they're, they're, they're fine and ready to go out there, I guess. That's it. And what'd be good is, 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 if they keep running ahead of schedule on that thing, and get it online sometime next year, still twenty-twenty-seven.
I got some guys from down the middle, who they're gonna come, because they want to be here, and they, they want to talk to us.
Well, she called on Wednesday, so she was a day late getting on this agenda, because we have to publish it on Tuesday now.
Yeah.
So she had called on Wednesday, so that's one, it's not gonna be till the next one.
That year, why, from Mason?
Uh, it's that Katie one from Houston.
Okay.
She was the original lady that came the first time.
Yeah, I see with the, with the new changes that went into the law, when it affects September the fourth. We have to publish three full business days instead of seventy-two hours, so we're having, we're having to publish in the mail. Any more questions, you calling to do anything? I don't remember none, I'm here.
That would be good.
We are here.
Do you just need that word copied?